Able to construct that road. Maybe the additional units for additional income. So they would want to do is tie the construction of those units to the construction of that road.
Which, which is a way of saying there won't be a road to the retail unless there would be these additional units.
Unless they get this is. It's amazing.
Really.
Because they can.
Well, I mean, I think this is, to zoom out a little bit, Gary, this is the gateway, planned development district. This is a whole exercise in planning. And I think we have, uh, some research to do on the story and whether the goals have been met and what the goals are moving forward.
Yeah.
Absolutely, up to that.
I'm covering that with you, for sure.
I would also point to the correspondence that I received from Harris. So it does indicate that currently we're going down the dark side of the country as well.
Okay, he's just telling.
That's, that's good.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of stuff.
But it doesn't, it doesn't move me, sorry. Especially since you have to go there. You have to go in that place.
Okay, so, uh, without further objection.
I mean, do you have any corrections to be researched?
We're gonna go on to seventeen.
Well, it sounds like, uh, we're going to, at least a few of us will attend this informational meeting that zoning is gonna be conducting.
What's the date of that?
Uh, seventeenth. I could, would imagine that that would, we're not speaking at that meeting, so we'll probably leave with some questions, which I think we could start at our meeting after the seventeenth. So that would be the our October meeting, right? Cause we're gonna meet again, it'll be two days before the information, informational meeting, that's not gonna be helpful.
Yes. Yes.
But we would attend the zoning thing and then in our October, first meeting in October, we'd be in a position to digest what was delivered to us, uh, at the zoning meeting, is that right?
Well, you're good, but you're gonna open up your public hearing on ten one, we don't need no, ten six.
How is that possible?
How is that possible?
Oh, cause it's the Tuesday thing, okay.
Right.
Usually they go two days after us, in this case it's Wednesday.
Should we meet on the fifteenth of, of September?
They meet the seventeenth.
So in order to come back and have the questions, at least for meeting, but we'll get answers to, uh, we've got to open up a special meeting.
Okay.
In order to get your comments into that public hearing, let's not decide that the zoning commission can't answer.
Well.
Uh, Chris Ball, you know, if they continue the public hearing.
But, but. Let, let's say they're moving very quickly and they open the public me, the public hearing.
Close it.
And close it right away, and then our letter shows up.
They can accept it.
They would, it would be the same, wouldn't it? I mean, that's all. You're just saying it's tidier if our report comes in before they even open the public hearing, cause it's on the table?
Right, or at the public. At least then they know that maybe a majority of, maybe one anyway.
They need it on, hey man.
But why don't the zoning commission add a reference to the meeting that it's important that they understand about distribution votes, and whether the majority, uh, can be established.
So why don't we carry this over, so our next meeting in two weeks?
Uh, because it's, because our next meeting in two weeks is still two days before we get the presentation. So we don't, the, our time to talk about the presentation would be, um, after they open their public hearing?
After the sentence. After the sentence.
If you have specific questions, you can now, to now our next meeting, by all means, direct it toward the hour ago.
Next afternoon.
Uh, and then additional questions come up on the seventeenth, I can only suggest that have a special meeting in, on Tuesday, twenty nine.
We've got time.
Yeah.
We could even, we could take action at our next meeting. Uh, we could give you, independent of Bill's presentation, some of the commission members might come up with questions in the next two weeks, which we could give you directives about. My only guidance would be, try to tell us, uh, planning's take on the whole thing, you know, as a town planner, tell us, I'm big on comparing, compared to what? It's a big box store, we got big box stores surrounding us, you know, how is this similar to one, how is it not similar? And I don't just mean the geometry, I mean the timeline. This has gone for a long time, we've built, we zoned a specific place to expedite.
Costco.
The development we wanted to see in East Lime, which was anchored by commercial. And, you know, we gotta compare it to other places, did they get the commercial, does it take thirty years?
And there's nothing here that says that Costco.
I mean, we, we need to set expectations, cause I think, uh, public opinion is that this oughta, this Costco was supposed to be here already.
Right. I mean, what does it say that they back out? There's nothing that says that they can't back out. Uh, after this length of time, yes.
Well, you know, I, I found an expression that they were wanting to be in earlier, in development, uh, but it's taken longer than expected, I guess.
Perhaps one of the things that we should be looking toward, this, the lawyer's letter talks to the, uh, financial benefit to the town in way of taxes, uh, um, I think, uh, anyone who might have reservations about this would be interested in pointing to the fact that residential does not cause a net increase in town revenue. Because of the output that is generally required to support residential through schools and other services. So the claims are, that might be something that, that I'm interested in pursuing, cause commercial is a true benefit. And we're not seeing, at least, perhaps we are, but I don't know that, uh, the energy is devoted toward that portion of the development to the degree that it is residential. They, and they state some, make some good statements about, uh, cash flow in, but neglect completely the cash flow out that is inherent in resi- residential development. So that, that would be, uh, as we look at plan of conservation and development, something that really needs to be addressed.
Uh, that's a great comment, Frank, and you just got me thinking, is a jump from two hundred eighty units to four hundred units, i- is there a traffic study? Is there an impact getting done alongside that?
Well, sure.
Uh, I imagine they did a traffic study for this initial thing, I think everybody is horrified at the, uh, dangers on the highway that we've, that we're seeing in the headlines every day. As part of this is reworking, part of this plan is to rework the exit on ramp off ramp out of nowhere there. I would be de, I would definitely wanna know, huh, a hundred and twenty units times, what do you usually say, two cars making a couple trips a day?
When you look at a hundred and twenty units, uh, either one in two bedroomed units, there are probably three bedrooms, so, I mean, you pick it up, you have a household, which is two people driving a car.
Yep. And so it's two cars and a couple trips a day, in and out, it's, it's gonna have an impact. And do we have a guy making that call for us, is there a traffic engineer on their team?
Currently, yeah, uh, part of it, we have our own tenant.
To me, it's a.
Time I believe, in the national plan, they look at the truck, that the truck, that that's, uh, so hopefully, uh, you know, I, I can also talk to Mr. Mahoney, maybe we can set up some sort of, uh, yeah.
That's something to think about, because to me, that's part of our diligence, right? If, if we have this development go through. And years from now, people say, who's, who, who created that traffic catastrophe in the middle of East Lime? You know, we'll say, well, we, uh, we didn't quite get together to get a traffic engineer, we added a hundred and twenty units.
Do you, do you remember when we were coming out of the, we were coming out of the backside where the, uh, the golf cart, golf place was? And we were coming on that road along where the pool company is?
Yeah.
We came out and we were on one sixty-one, which was Flanders at that point, because it was the intersection of the off-ramp of seventy-four. To get from where we were to the street, to go underneath, to get, you know, to Pennsylvania Avenue, or is that Flanders?
Flanders.
Flanders, it was very, very difficult making a, a right, never mind a left. Am I right?
Yeah, definitely, definitely, a lot of traffic.
I mean, it was, it, it was, just hurry up and go.
There is a plan in the works, uh, for that intersection, and it stands now, uh, with, with Costco, which went forward. There's a long-term plan, uh, Bill Mahoney and I, a lot of, uh, town engineer, and Mr. Shear, directed, went to, uh, Newington, DOT, and met with a number of folks there. Which, uh, DOT is basically just coming up and saying, this is what we will build. There's a whole concept to that, as far as widening Bridge of Buckmans, under the.
Right, seventy-four ramp, right.
Mm-hmm.
Re- re- relocation of seventy-four ramp on and off.
Right.
Bill showed me that sketch.
They haven't even done that yet.
So, no, that, that hasn't, that will be, uh, I guess, any.
But let's just think about it in the big chunky numbers, what are they gonna build a Costco and then tear up the interchange and make it turn into a?
Build a Costco, you can have a long driveway to it, and then you're gonna start doing interchange, and that's, that'll, I don't know if that will come with Costco, after Costco.
It makes sense to me that Costco is gonna say, yeah, we want it to be just right, and, uh, we wanna get all this residential built, and we wanna get the interstate safe. We don't wanna have some, cause listen, we just did, they just did this over in Waterford, and immediately there are accidents when people are coming off the highway, cause you just changed an off-ramp.
Mm-hmm.
People, people do it, they've been doing it for years, right?
Right.
So, um, seeing as we haven't seen any commercial so far, a DOT project at the scale that they're proposing, sounds like something that they'd wanna let get complete and then slide into place as the last person there.
And then.
And if that's the case, we were talking about a time horizon for a DOT job to change ninety, I ninety-five, and I looked at it with Bill Mahoney today. They're changing it significantly, you're gonna have, you'll see it, it's one of those spaghetti things, but there's gonna be a whole new way. You, instead of, if you're at the high school, you wanna get on ninety-five going to Groton, instead of taking that left, which is kinda right near Starbucks there, taking that left, you don't take the left anymore. They're gonna build a new one, so you take it as a right and whip all the way around, so it's, I mean, it's.
And throw all of that into, if, whatever the issue is of Colquins Road getting approved, just throw that in there.
Yes, and, and then, and then what we're hearing is, well, there's no traffic study.
Let's get traffic study.
And there isn't a traffic study.
Let's figure it out.
I just have a comment. The planning commission approved based on the original condos and a box store coming in. I'd like to know the impact on our aquifer of all these other new ones that are being proposed. Since we already have a problem up there.
Yes. Well, and, uh, I'm, I'm with you, Joan.
Mm-hmm. So it's, you know, with this, and then if a box store does come in, the impact on the environment up there, that's our aquifer, it's a.
And if I heard you correctly, what you'd said was, uh, they have not yet pulled a wetland permit for the Costco?
Right.
So it's like, you know, that, that hasn't even been.
But.
Well, I just got.
It's very preliminary.
Then, look, right now, what they're trying to do is go through the army corps and, and see where their rules are with that first. I, I think they're thinking that that could be beneficial in terms of going to the local authority, as, as a way of saying, look, we've already got our army corps for this.
Well, they're anticipating people from town are gonna call the army, just like what happened up at, uh, an upper part of town, somebody's gonna say.
So.
The army needs to know about this, and then it gets very complicated.
So my, my understanding is that, uh, they're, they're at a point right now where they're working with the army corps and they're trying to get the road cost to buy, always having this river, one where.
Look, this may get a bit.
Below five thousand foot threshold, or that's five hundred, five thousand square foot, area of the skirt, that threshold.
Okay.
If they can get below that, that saves them a lot of work. And go, and see that threshold, they're gonna do the number of the, the stuff.
Let me ask you this, and then we'll move on, as wetlands officer, is the commercial project feasible as it stands right now?
Again, uh, according to the state statutes and our regulations, we regulate impacts of, of the activity, we want not prohibited.
Okay.
You know, so long as that the commission cannot find an, an feasible group alternative, or someone obligated to approve a plan, um, obviously they have to evaluate. What extent, so they can.
Uh, well, I, I, I liked Joan's comment, and I think that, uh, that would be a great place to start, from your department's preparation for this, the wetland stuff, hydrology. Telling the story of, uh, how this parcel plays into our drinking water and understanding all that.
I would, as it plays into our drinking water in the wetlands, there's not regular groundwater. And drinking water that's more than sewer.
Right, but we.
And certainly, I think there was also a concern about quality of drinking water, uh, and should, you know, we have a well that's downstream get contaminated, that, that's problematic for us. You think about that interconnection, that, uh, regional interconnection, where we shifted water during our wet season, in winter, over some length of moment. Well, that water is contaminated, they're not that water.
No.
So we have to probably shut down a well if it's contaminated, so, that's another concern, concern.
Well, that should get us started.
Yeah.
Uh, if, moving on to item B, application of Theodore A. Harris, application for a text amendment to the East Lime zoning regs for a proposed brew pub regulation in the light industrial zone. And their public hearing starts on nine seventeen.
First. So you have got these regulations there, uh, I think you had saw something similar to this, or application in commercial business, uh, did find consistent with the bill.
Yeah.
I, I think during that construction, you get, indicate that, uh, brew re, if, a more, I don't think that you, I mean, uh, I know that, that's something to give up, is get them to manufacture, uh, and just build, uh, a brew pub, uh, they're building in the fashion. Also is getting here that, such as selling alcohol.
And again, this is a, this is a regulation that's proposing a brew pub in the light industrial zone, so we need to ask you, uh, Mr. Geishel, for a map of all our light industrial, because we need to imagine this could appear anywhere in the light industrial, not just the obvious places. Right, if we change the regs, so I think that, uh, we can table this until our next meeting, wait for a memo and some maps from Mr. Geishel, and hopefully take action, uh, on the fifteenth, which would be in time for the zoning public hearing. Anybody, is everybody okay with that?
Not a time, yep.
The, the prior submission was very similar, that was a different person, different individual.
It was in the, it was in the, not in the village, different person, different person.
And that was, uh, we had commercial A, and we, in our, in our motion, I think we, or our recommendations, we said that commercial A, B, light, heavy industrial, and the gateway. I mean, we said, why not all these places while you're at it? I bet you we could, uh, forth a almost similar motion, we've had this discussion, we looked at the potential for smells, and we found the words that says, since it was a, uh, special use permit, that, those are all covered. But I, I think we, uh, I think you already have the motion, we, we, we chewed on this one pretty, pretty hard, if I, unless something's different.
Master man.
What's, what's that name?
Uh, I don't know, I just stumbled on it, I went back, uh, and they had no more than five thousand barrels, and, uh, I don't know, fifty percent of all beer we sold via retail. We had a concern about food, and we said, hey, maybe limited to thirty-two ounces per person, and the little samples.
Smell odor. Odor, don't forget the odor.
Yeah, the odor, but that's in the regs, that's, it's a special use permit, so that, you have to tick off every one of those things, the odor, the noise, the.
Right, and I think what, what we'd be doing in this, so item of business is, whereas before we were looking at conflicts from manufacturing in our downtown, with this one, we're gonna be looking for conflicts of bringing people into a bar, that's in a light industrial, wherever that is.
But they're not calling it a bar.
It's a bar.
I, I know, but they're not calling it a bar.
Right, they're calling it a.
Yeah, scarcity, gateway planned development district on the north side here, and then again, you have the Central Park Road, uh, basically behind the Stop and Shop.
Yep.
Triumph, uh, and the middle school right up here, and then the other light industrial zone is, is at the, uh, western end of town. It's where the ninety-five, the, uh, brought to that connection, and, and, and.
So maybe you could give us some maps, just zoom in on that, and, you know, we'll do, try to get the flavor, cause any one of those three par, uh, aggregates of LI could get a fun new brew pub, and we have to figure out, is that consistent with our P O C?
Right.
Yep. Uh, is that, any objections to that?
No.
No.
Yeah. We already did the eight twenty-four, that brings us to old business, uh, Gary, I'm just gonna table that, cause we're pushing a couple hours in here. Planets P O C D, did you have something that we needed to get to, uh, tonight? Why is that on there, A, old business, P O C D?
It's good if you could talk, uh, you were talking during, uh, sidewalk plan, transportation.
We'll do that under your comments at the end, I think. Uh, new business, East Lime subdivision regulation proposed changes in our packets at the very end, uh, seven A. East Lime subdivision regulation proposed changes to section nine, I assume this came from our town council?
That's, uh, provided your packet, uh, draft, provided by council, uh, the subdivisions that we have going, uh, that's all, they're important, monthly draft, based on Jake that discussed about last meeting. Here, uh, but at this point, considering, uh, bond issues that we dealt with with tortures, uh, discussions with attorney and client, uh, we felt that, at this point, the entire commission knows just about, I don't know, bond issues as a subcommittee. This tax forward, discussion and review, and, uh, when we get to a point where we're satisfied, we can spend the public hearing.
Yeah, well, I don't think we're gonna take any action tonight, let's read that.
No, I, I, that, that's, I would.
Yep.
Give it, um.
Good reading.
Then, then, uh. Got any questions, certainly, uh, wrote them.
Okay, that brings us to reports, uh, chairman, um, I'll just get tonight, uh, ex officio, Roseanne Hardy, good to see you, how are you?
I'd still have the lengthy meeting tonight, and I should have two meetings a spot for it, I think I'll report for the next meeting.
Great.
And at that point, uh, I also have Board of Ed ex officio, I would be able to approach you on the enrollment, and there's a school, I think, uh, assistant or so, or planning.
Oh.
Totally good.
Uh, those, we can get those this next meeting?
We should be able to, I think we'll hear them out, they did a preliminary report, I think that at the next meeting, it'll be formed up, not the enrollment that today, it'll be formed up.
Sure.
So in August, they got some reporting to report, but it might interest me that, um, all the talk that we've heard about declining enrollment, they've actually had to hire another kindergarten teacher, which they just put the ad out for last week, and the high school has had a net loss of, on the student. So I think I'd be able to give you the particulars about how, you know, things kind of balanced out, and I think that I'd be a little interested in you, uh, particularly in your discussion and thoughts about, uh, gateway, because initially they were supposed to have one or two bedroom apartments, and now I think the minds of the light on students, that they're in the bedroom apartments. And it, I think that's one thing to look at, where the next two minutes of their proposal, the post-attention happening, schedules, they want them to be used.
Certainly, certainly, yeah, and, 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 on that same topic, we're trying to take the very biggest picture we can of the long-term trends on, uh, um, uh, student enrollment. So the, you know, I, I'm familiar with the census data, where we've been since two thousand to two thousand and ten, and, um, yeah.
The prediction was it going to be a noticeable drop this year, and continue, and that has not happened.
Is that because we have the best information?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure, we'll have to see what happens when we get this final report after the first couple weeks, because some students just, like, don't show up, and you didn't know they weren't gonna show up.
Right.
You know, and then you find out.
I was one of those guys.
And then, of course, we then have the new students coming in, so they've figured out where it's gonna settle up. Actually, at high school, there are some students that run the rolls, have, have shown up since day one, so who knows where they are.
Yep.
I think we need that to report, and it's, you know, we have the first set of data, which should be coming out, I think, at, uh, the next quarter.
And, and just from a point of, uh, of, of where there's overlap there, the Board of Ed runs their own projections and numbers, whereas the planning department, we aren't consulted in how that works, how does that?
They did have, um, a consultant, they hired a consultant this time around specifically because of the school, uh, the new school openings. So they do have the long, what were given as the long range projections, uh, in terms of planning for the needs of the, how they were going to revise the elementary schools. So.
Oh, they have that?
They, they have, they have that, but it's, but it's a year old now.
Right.
And so the projections, we're not seeing already what they, what they projected now, cause they're too long term. But this year, for instance, you're having to hire a kindergarten, you don't have a kindergarten teacher, you figure the majority of those kids will be here for the next twelve years.
Sure.
So, it could just be a failure.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fascinated by that stuff, and I'm, uh, I'm looking forward to hearing it. Was that all?
Yes, I think I've finished with.
Oh, uh, one other point, we've met an intern today from Eastern.
Yes.
He'll be, uh, his name's Joel Hera, um, Gary's gonna talk more about it, but I wanted to reach out to you for any high schoolers that we might be able to just kinda sidecar on. He's a, this guy's a junior at Eastern, taking a lot of courses, very capable, um, to me, it's a great opportunity, if there are some high schoolers, they, you know, get in the mix and contribute.
Can you, uh, send me an email?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm going, uh, I'm, I'm talking to a couple, uh, I'm talking to, uh, teacher that, uh, department has, that has some of the students in this program that might be more interested in engineering.
Yeah, I would say mapping, geography, it's a lot of, anything visual.
I use, um, micro studies.
Computers.
Okay.
Town life.
Just say you're posting your email.
Will do, will do, thank you, Roseanne. Uh, Rose is, uh, the zoning representative, uh, Ernie, were you able to attend the?
No, that, that was one of those ones where I was on the schedule and the meeting happened in the past, because the schedule kept train, changing.
No worries.
I did, I went.
Yeah.
Read a guy.
It was a six, it was a six-thirty meeting instead of a seven-thirty meeting, they just, it, just read it, it's easier. The, uh, Colquins project was up again for probably the, whatever time, um, they had a couple of things on the agenda, but everything that they had was pushed over to the September third, um, to Thursday's meeting. And, um, because everything, they couldn't get off of the conversation as far as Colquins Road and the attorneys.
Oh.
Yeah, so there really isn't much to report, except that everything will happen Thursday.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, I wanna table subcommittees, cause we just, we already talked about the subdivision one, and I don't think there's anything new on sustainable development. Correct? And that would bring us to the staff communications, so I just ask you to be brief, Mr. Geishel.
Uh, don't you just begin to-
Sorry to do that to you, but-
Um-
They're gonna meet-
Before I mentioned, oh, sorry, yeah, so, or we go back and destroy.
I'd like to see that, cause I see it as almost grooming, like, interns of the future, right? Maybe they're gonna be summer kids after their freshman year of college next year, something we can start to, cause this guy's from far off, he's from-
Hebron.
Hebron. So, you know, he's a little bit oriented around town, but it would be great if, like, local kids could, uh, could-
So it, it is a start. Um, I'm really excited, Ryan and I have been talking about it, so I'm excited about planning, uh, for the town. So now we got something to actually map out, digitize work that's already been done, public works. Uh, they've identified whether the sidewalk's on the left or right side of the road, he's gonna map all that out. Be able to find where, where the linkage is, where maybe we don't need the sidewalk. Uh, on top of that, looking to do a cost benefit analysis of the new linear footage versus the return on investment. Incorporate that as part of the transportation plan, P O C D. Possibly get that into the, uh, something along with the capital plan. Start making investment in the sidewalk. Along with that, we're incorporating some bike paths and bike lanes. Uh, advertising to say that we need to biking, uh, trying to roll out this, page curve on Lander's Road, uh, and more partner. So, you know, we'll, we'll start there and then we can discuss other projects.
And, uh, and he's a young guy who's got a lot of energy, so any questions that the planning commission might have, uh, he's a, he's, he's looking for pet projects, even simple answers. I, I asked him today if there were, I said, maybe he can help us figure out if there's more books on Main Street now than there were when we had a library there. As a result of the book barn having moved into our town. Quantity wise, you know. Curious to find out.
I'd say yes.
Right?
Yes.
No one saw that coming, planning didn't see that coming.
Don't worry.
Books everywhere.
Send it back there?
Yeah, it's a good thing, it's a good thing.
Mapping, I think, assess dogs throughout town, we have all that data. Just get a kind of a sense of, you know, landowners throughout town, that, that is something.
Yes.
Has anybody really seen this? Have you seen the progress here?
Well, they're ready to pour, uh-
It's amazing.
Great.
So quick.
I'd like to see a study on solar energy in town. How many do exist and where we can improve.
Yes, the, and the impact of that solarized program. Cause they came and spoke to planning about it, and I have no idea if they did ten or-
There you go, we need a study.
I, I had them at my house.
Okay.
On the solarized program. So I better report that back to Phil.
Yeah. Okay, speaking of the next meeting, do we hear a motion to adjourn?
A adjourn.
I heard Joan and then Rita, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Good night.
Good night, everybody, thank you for your patience, two and a half hours.